Right? Okay. That's, that's fine. Yep, it's fine. So we're starting, it's six oh one, we're gonna get going without those guys.
Has anybody heard from them or?
I'm assuming they're still in their meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So. Okay.
Bro, this is, I just have them.
Yeah, we do.
Lights right here.
Okay, so, um, I gotta say the time because we're starting late. Six oh two, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and equal liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, um, welcome to our new community room. Um, we are happy to be in here, uh, we are a little echoey, so if you're watching at home, um, we are aware of that. And it is not tech- technical difficulties, this is what it is right now. Acoustic issues are being addressed. So, uh, also gonna read our district mission statement. Uh, in partnerships with the communities, the mission of the Dilworth-Linden Felton School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect, so they become self-directed, responsible, lifelong learners. Um, all board members are present this evening, as well as Superintendent Hennstedt, um, our Assistant Principal Katie Omen, along with, um, our Community Director Tracy Tolleson. So, welcome. Um, we do have changes to the agenda this evening. We are going to be tabling our administrative contracts, so nine point one. We are just gonna wait until the final three are completed and address that next meeting, so, um, that is the only change, correct?
Um, you guys did notice, we also added nine point six and nine point seven from last week when we shared it out. We wanted to make sure those bus routes were on here that we talked about with the contractors, and then our LTFM. Um, it has to be by, done by the end of July, and we do need the resolution, I found out, in July. So, we're gonna talk about that today.
Okay.
Uh, and I'll share some information during my report. And so then you know what you're approving. We'll talk about it, okay? Um, the resolution then goes in later this week, so I'll, I'll touch base more on that.
Okay. So we, uh, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Laura, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, um, public comments, rebel recognition, we do have, uh, one speaker today, Jeff Nikus. So I'm gonna let you come up here, Jeff, because it's kind of echoey. And we have our little, uh, microphone right here, so you can just stand right here. Amy's gonna time you, you get, I always forget, five minutes.
Right.
So welcome, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. So I'm Jeff Nikus, I'm with the Clay County Attorney Dotments, and I work in restorative justice. And I have been a restorative justice coordinator for the last couple of years. What I'm here to do is to kind of follow up on a invitation that was sent to all of uh, on or about June twenty seventh. And, so what I'm gonna do is just kind of reiterate that invitation. And remind you that this Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday in Morehead, and then Thursday in Hall, nine to eleven. So, here's the letter. This is about restorative justice, this is something that we've been doing out of our office for the last twenty plus years with Clay County. This letter, I think, will cover some, uh, gaps that exist. So, dear stakeholders, the schools of Clay County, the Clay County Board of Customers has awarded funding through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 to the Clay County Attorney's Office Juvenile Division Program to hire a full-time school-based restorative practices coordinator for over twenty years, again, in restorative justice. Juvenile diversion tourism has been working with Clay County to adjust criminal behavior. This project is to establish restorative practices in schools and would allow for a more holistic approach to addressing student behavioral criminal issues by creating a response to each incident that would examine possible school consequences, potential juvenile justice consequences, and the opportunity to repair the relationship that was damaged due to the student's behavior. The Board of Commissioners was compelled to fund this initiative based on research specific to pandemic-related decline in child and adolescent unemployment, increasing school-based incidents, as well as feedback from school resource officers throughout the year. We invite you, it's an invitation to join the Clay County Attorney's Office as we discuss our vision of partnering with the Clay County Schools and law enforcement to offer a restorative legal approach within middle and high schools as those businesses quit. We are offering two site locations for conversation with people and asking for time to resume schedules to attend more sessions. What are you witnessing at your school? Restorative practices are used to build healthy relationships and create unity in school, to develop a positive school climate, prevent bullying and harm, and to help repair conflict. Restorative practices apply equally to everyone we speak with, including students, adults, families, and community members. Is your school's climate friggin' optimal? What are your concerns? With this background, we wish to invite you to a conversation that addresses these issues. And we're going to structure the conversation in a manner that will give you direct experience and exposure to some of the methods used in restorative practices, as well as sharing trends regarding restorative justice coordination position. You'll get your input, if you're input on how best to proceed. The letter goes on, it talks about funding. I'm not here to ask for money, but that, that's been taken care of. I mentioned that in the first paragraph. But we're asking, the ask is really to figure that it's in the meeting and learn more. And then, uh, we're gonna ask partners with school districts in Clay County to establish a referral process, provide space on a weekly basis. The coordinator would go from, you know, Yulin Hitterdale, the bar, the PGL, to, uh, Morehead Five, to, uh, Horizon. So they would be at each location. So that is basically it, the letter goes on, there are more to it. It's probably in your inbox, or, or you received the hard copy, one of the two. If you have any questions, um, I guess I can answer it now, is that correct? Is that outside of the, covering outside the lines?
I, it's more about just a dialect, but yes, I mean, if anybody, can you just mention the times again?
Sure.
Uh, Wednesday's ten, you will, eleven, right at Morehead?
Correct, at the, uh, Marriott.
Marriott, okay, and then Thursday?
And we have an admin team going to that.
Oh, good, so we have our administration going, okay.
And, um, but all school board members, the boss that have you. Okay, um, and, um, Thursday, so the next day, twenty eighth, in Hallie, at the American.
All right. Well, we appreciate you coming to invite us in person, and, uh, thank you so much.
Yeah, I graduated from.
Did you? Wonderful.
For a long time.
Well, thank you for attending, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Hand that to Amy, please. Okay, so, uh, rebel recognition, anybody have anything? I heard the Boys Legion Team won last night, so they're gonna go to state for summer ball. Oh, good, for, uh, baseball? Okay, wonderful, uh, the fourteen U girls finished yesterday in their tier in State softball, and they got fourth out of sixteen, so. Yeah, so summer stuff's starting to wrap up, and, uh, school supplies are out. All right, great. Um, let's move on, six point one, uh, so we wanna welcome Katie Omen, this is her first activities directory report, so. Welcome, Katie. She, she did hand us out a, uh,
There is a handout, yeah.
A handout here, so.
So, yeah, it's kind of been the first, the first official month, I guess. Um, and I, so I just highlighted kind of some of the things I'm working on. I guess my main goal right now is really communi- communication and collaboration. Um, working with the fall coaches a lot right now, trying, I don't know what I don't know, kind of thing, so working with them, they're helping me out. Um, I'm doing my best to help them out. Um, we did the coaches handbook, I think we had the second reading tonight, I think you've all seen that. Um, and I worked with, you know, Lindsay was on there, Shannon, to try to get something together, because we just didn't have a guideline for coaches. Uh, so I think that'll be helpful in the future. Um, number two, we did name our gym. Love it or hate it, we named it, and, uh, we have, we have the fort, did I list them there?
No, you didn't, but it was in your email. So you went to Volvers, Ronnie went to Duck, that you named.
And that's what I was thinking, I'm like, who wants to get this?
Yeah, because all I think about, well, I don't know if you got it or not, the ones that don't have kids in high school activities, so.
Um, so the fort is this gym, right here, the fort, yep. The fort, yep. And then the old high school gym is the rebel. And then the Glendon Felton, former Glendon Felton Elementary Gym is the buffalo. And then we have, I hope everyone can keep this straight.
Oh, I think it's fabulous, I was so excited.
The new gym in Dilworth is the depot. The former middle school gym is the loco. And then the multipurpose room is the tiger's den. So we tried to incorporate.
Tiger's Den?
The tiger's den.
I used to work, no, I'm better.
So you have.
I get much of following the gym break, so.
Okay. So the new middle school, the new elementary, brand new gym is the depot? And then the loco? And then the tiger's den?
Um, number three, so we have all our coaches ready to go, they're all hired for, uh, fall sports. Um, we have a new seventh grade football coach, a new middle school volleyball coach, and a new middle school athletics coach. And they're starting off in only a couple of weeks, so. That's great, um, communications, like I said, if you had a seven, twelve, uh, kid, you would have gotten this, but have been sent to families. There, I just sent out kind of a newsletter on July eighteenth that has the registration and paperwork, and then we're actually doing a physical blitz. Uh, just with legacy chiropractic, uh, students can go in there, you can do it for fifty bucks, um, and get physical. And that's on August first, and there's a sign up for that. Uh, let's see here. Yeah, and the communication at late activity bus info, I know that's always kind of been a thing that parents really wonder about, so. Got that done, and then number five, we have meetings set up, so I'll meet with all the head coaches, uh, for the whole district on August second, just to kind of introduce myself and go through the new, uh, coaches handbook, and they all have gotten it already, so they've been able to review it online. Um, and then the fall coaches on August eighth. We have a practice time all set in stone, and things ready to go before school starts, so that's good. And then the parents and athlete meeting after the fall coaches meeting. Uh, new online registration, so we are doing a all-new online registration to kind of cut down on the paperwork that's involved. Make sure, it's easier to track to see who's missing what, um, when it's all right there. And so we have a ton, I think, when I looked, uh, over the weekend, I think we already have forty students registered, we'll have a lot more. Um, I've only sent it out once, though, I was kind of impressed with how many have registered, and they're completely ready to go and paid and everything. So, that will also help with the payment and making sure that we have all the stuff covered. Um, all the schedules are up, uh, on our school, so you can view them, and then also in that newsletter was direction on how to get notifications for our school. Because there's a lot of features in there, I know a lot of, uh, parents sometimes feel like they're out of, they're not in the know about activities, but it's all right on there, and you can get notifications, uh, for whatever activity you want, so I tried to explain that. Uh, let's see here, pick up, so gym storage, we're waiting for the gym storage to kind of be done on both sides, so we can get stuff out of where we have storage now, because the middle school football is now gonna be here, whereas in the past, it's always been in Dilworth, so we have to get, um, all that equipment over here. So we're just kind of waiting to take control of the storage areas, so we can get the FIED, and all the other athletic equipment, all of the current areas, so we can move things along. Uh, we're looking to get a shed moved over to kind of behind the softball field there, so we can have some storage for middle school stuff. Uh, we can't move a shed right now, because all the construction equipment is lying in the field, so we can't get a truck back there to move it. And gym's being ready, but I think we talked to Travis. And for the middle school gym, um, I must get a little worried that we might not have a middle school gym for August twenty ninth, but it sounds like we will, have it once one.
It's looking, it, it looks good.
Uh, yeah, so, questions for me?
Since I'm done on all of this, the art school, I've had, or anybody?
Yeah, that's okay, one, so check on the website, under activities and athletics, and it has all the schedules. Um, eventually they'll have rosters as well, um, but it has all the schedules for seven through twelve athletics. And you can select which ones you wanna do, which ones you want applications on.
It's just a doggone number of that.
Yep, yep, it's right on the activities website, yep.
Not a question, but, you know, thank you for the words that I'm a full scandal.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And then, maybe the gym's.
Yeah.
Oops, maybe, I made a call. Appreciate it, yeah. I know, we're like, we can't always call it, oh, old high school gym, old Glendon Felton Elementary Gym, so, yeah.
The former middle school.
Yeah, I know. I think this will be nice, because, yeah, I mean, you probably have to have stuff behind it for a while, and then people will just know.
And that's what it is, like, on our school, when we say we're thinking that, we do have an inference of the thing.
Yeah.
So, and hopefully it's fine eventually, and stuff like that.
We have time, yep.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, Tracy, six point two, a summer recreation report. Looks, I, looks like we have a lot of kids that were participating this summer.
We did, um, overall, um, just touch base on a few things. One, with construction, we really had to be flexible on where activities were, so when we put out the brochure, we truly put Glendon or Dilworth Gym. The week before an event, we would let them know, okay, it's gonna be here. Um, we just had to kind of keep it that way until we got to a week before to know where we were gonna play. So, overall, a lot of our activities, um, the classroom things were held over in Dilworth this summer. Um, it, it just made it a little bit easier with all the construction going on at the site. Um, so we had a lot of the onsite classes over there. Uh, we did a lot of our actual, um, ponytail, um, uh, peely. This year, you'll notice on our, on our programming, we didn't, we didn't host, uh, or offer a little league program, because a lot of the kids that are in that grade level are doing a lot of night games. Um, and they're playing with the athletic club, so a lot of them, it just probably gets too much for a family to do both day and night. So, we weren't able to field a, a little league team, but overall, we had, um, a lot of participation. Um, and a lot of our fields, um, were, were quite busy. We did host again this year a ponytail softball, um, tournament. Usually that's always done in Hallie, but we split it with Hallie this year, and we're able to host again this year in Dilworth, which was really nice. Um, we saw a big increase in our drivers added enrollment this summer, I think a lot of families are taking an opportunity in doing ten days at three hours at a time, and they're done, instead of thirty-one hour block. So, we might be offering three sessions next summer, just because it's putting forty kids, you know, thirty-five in a classroom, it gets to be a lot. Um, so that's one of the things, um, we've talked about, so, um, a lot of busyness. Um, I did mention to Shannon, one of the things, uh, I wanted to touch base on a little bit down was one of our new programs that the district is looking at. Um, but before I get into that, anybody have any summer rec questions before I jump into that? Won't take me too long. If you think of anything, let me know. Um, Rebel Kids Care has been very, very busy this summer. Um, parents, the one thing that we do is if a parent signs up for summer rec, we had over ninety kids in Rebel Kids Care this summer. At any given time, we could have fifty-five one day and sixty-seven the next. Um, but what we did internally is anytime we looked at our complete roster, and every day I would bring a list to Rebel Kids Care in the morning and say, okay, here are the kids that are coming today, but also of these kids that are coming, here's the list, you have to bring the softball, here's the list that go to art camp, here's the list. So it was a lot of, um, just tracking, so, um, it worked very well. No one got lost. But it was, it really worked well, and I think the parents appreciated it, because they didn't have to come to us and say, can you bring Jimmy here, here, and here, and here? We took our internal data, created reports, so that we knew every day where those kids were going. So, hopefully, you got some good feedback on that. Um, staffing has been fabulous, we staffed this summer with four adults, and we had about ten to twelve students that helped out, um, been great. Um, so that, that's been wonderful for us. The one thing that we're doing a little bit, um, different for fall, and as we go into summer, we're trying to focus a lot on priority levels for our Rebel Kids Care, where, um, we're trying to prioritize those full-time students to get them in, because otherwise we hold this spot for this one day, and we find that parents are willing to pay for the five days. Um, if they were to come before and after school, um, five days a week for each kiddo, um, it is seventy dollars for the week. And they have a spot every morning and every night, um, um, for the week. So, we've had a lot of enrollment, we will see right now for fall, we already have ninety-four tentatively signed up for fall. So now our next question to Shannon will be, okay, what are the rules? So, overall, that's a good problem to have. Um, but, um, so that's where we are with that. The other thing that I think we are excited about, and I'm probably gonna speak a little bit for the admin team. Um, this last winter, um, we chatted a little bit with a gal by the name of Heidi Dillmeyer. She runs Ha- uh, Central Pass Treehouse. If any of you get a chance, go out and look at their webpage. Um, it is a program that they run with, um, Cassafin Schools. And it is a, a program that works on the social, physical, um, and needs of the students. Um, so what that means is, when the kids, um, in the community might not have food, they might not have school supplies, they might not have feminine products, they might be in mental health crisis. Um, students can go out to that, an app, or to the webpage and say, I need help. Uh, I don't have food, I don't have, um, shoes to start the school year, I don't have a backpack, or I'm in crisis mode. Um, and they go onto the app, and that app triggers them, um, an opportunity to connect with first link in the FM area. It allows them to connect directly to a counselor here within the district. Um, and it is a phenomenal thing that they've implemented in their district. The admin team has met with Heidi, who referred, her husband goes work for Microsoft, who created the app, and, um, we've met with them, looked at it, and with that, myself and Mrs. John are working with, um, we've met a few times with UC Hope. And if you were to look at, um, the webpage that we have down below, we want to, um, allow you an opportunity to go out and look at this webpage. And what it will be is, the district has dedicated two spots within the school, one in Dilworth, one in Glendon. Um, in Glendon, it will be the office I'm currently in now. And when we have students go out to this app and say, or this webpage and say, I need a backpack, I don't have shoes to start the school year. Um, our goal also is, kids might need haircuts. Um, they will go out to this webpage, fill out my name, my phone number, um, and my locker number. And us, along with UC Hope, are working together to meet the needs of those students. We will get those, or we select people within our district, um, that will get these, um, alerts saying we have students who need something. Um, and we will go to our store, UC Hope Rebel Store, and fill these orders. It might be partnering with Mr. O'Keefe and some students to say, can you fill this order? There's no, um, when we get the request, we'll have in, um, the lunch number. So we might have people help us fill these orders, and then we will literally notify them that your order has been placed in your locker. Um, it is wonderful, I mean, kids who need a coat, they would put in a request, and we would fill those needs. And, um, UC Hope would help us fill those leads. They're gonna help, um, from a financial standpoint, um, from kids who might need clothing, um, food, anything like that. I just encourage you to go look at our webpage, it's just a draft right now, we haven't put anything live. Um, but it's now, now that we've kind of got the foundation set, we'll go back and work with our admin team and say, okay, once we get the request, who will be the counselor, um, that will filter these, um, so that we can determine where they need to go. Um, everything UC Hope knows, nothing of our student database or anything. All they know is, it's this student's lunch number, and we might work with Heidi at high school, middle school, and say, okay, this order um, is ready to go, and our goal is to fill every order within twenty-four hours. So, go out there, look at this webpage, and just see, um, what you think. Um, the ne- the next slide would be the, the piece called fifth quarter, which would then be the social things, that it might be after a game, four quarters in the game, now we wanna provide events within our district, it might be a dance after a football game, it might be um, something that we come up with, that could be activities that they could do to keep them from making choices that might not be healthy. Um, so, we are super excited, um, to get this stuff in going, but we want your feedback, and, um, I know that, um, Carrie Peterson, Connie Ochsner, Cindy Hendrickson, myself, Mrs. John, um, Angel Akri will be one of the counselors, and we've, uh, pulled in Katie Omen as well, um, so that all sites are represented, and, um, all the new students are met.
This is why I'm trying to show all the parents who are.
Yes. The other thing that, what, with UC Hope is, um, we're also gonna have that Amazon wishlist. If you were to go out right now to say the Central Pass Treehouse, they actually have it out there, where parents can walk there and buy things, and they ship right there. So we will do the same thing, people can, in the next probably week, the goal is to get this open, so that people can make their oceans, they can, um, um, buy things to stock our store, because you will literally walk in both of our sites, and there'll be plastic clear containers where you can literally go and say, okay, I need your socks, I need a pair of five-nine shoes, I need this. And we'll be able to meet those needs, so. It's super exciting, um, and I think it'll, it'll help a lot of families. So, all right.
That's awesome.
And I think.
I was able to attend the meeting that Tracy talked about with UC Hope and, uh, and the Cas- Central Cas, it was ver- very impress- very impressive, and, uh, it, it's something, what's nice about it is you start to go, oh, is that gonna work, is that gonna work here? When you have somebody that's already done it and had a positive experience, and it's, uh, a smaller community than we are, you go, okay, if there's a need in that, and they're able to fulfill it, we for sure will be able to, so it's, yeah, I'm encouraged by what can happen.
And on their webpage, Central Pass Treehouse, you can actually, you click on one of the links, and it tells you how it'll start almost from treehouse. Um, they're in a treehouse because of the squirrels.
Yeah.
Um, you know, but overall, uh, it really walks you through how to start it. And so we just took that model and said, if it's working for them, it's gonna work for us, so, um, I think it'll help a lot. If you think of anything, and that can involve us.
Thank you, Tracy. All right, six point three, board committee reports.
So, I was about to, yeah. Uh, we've had extra for the board meeting. Um, we've had a very much community meeting, and if you could put that, please, essentially, um, where we ended up for forty-one students, we're, uh, right on, yeah. And I think it's about that more today, and, uh, we talked a little bit about the administrative contracts, and the man working through those. Um, the food really didn't have to be that big of a thing.
And then we also talked about our construction budget, and kind of where that's at, and still in a good place right now, and.
Yeah, we, the construction budget, I mean, there's, uh, all these difficulties in construction, right? Uh, but we are looking really good, uh, from, from what we gathered from what's happened. And so, uh, we have no, no large help to get.
Yeah. Yeah, and then one thing I would do wanna talk about real briefly with the budget is if you noticed tonight in your consent agenda, that we're still showing, it's kind of a wrap-up of last year. of last year. Uh so it's if you look at, if you looked at your consent agenda, the budget that we shared, because the new twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budget has not entered into Region One's account yet, Marcus is getting that uploaded and that will be, so our next meeting will show the new budget. So if you look at this one, he was able to close out everything now. We thought, you know what, let's show you the actual closeout and ended up like one point eight percent over, maybe, one point eight. Um he also said there's a couple revenue things that he still is gonna come in and shift. So he said it's almost gonna be, he feels almost a dead wash. Our audit is in September and so we'll have a closure to it for sure, but Region One wasn't able to get it, we weren't able to get it all loaded up yet. So we wanted to give you something and he had a few other things that happened uh in June that we wanted to make sure were reflected at the board meeting. Okay?
But it's gonna have, not pick on Tracy, but why do you, these sort of such word, all that happens to mom and dad and relations for the bad ones, we have a break.
Well, so uh part of that is, and so when you look at that percentage, I think it's the budget didn't know what was gonna happen and Rebel Kids Care wasn't in the budget. So the budget got tweaked pretty significantly because it wasn't even in there. And so as we know, Rebel Kids Care has kind of exploded. So that was a big part of the change in the budget because it wasn't even identified.
Which we were underlasted too, but that could be depending on how shit with the rich year.
Little bit of that, yep, yep. Um so this was Marcus's first year too in coding everything. So we had a lot of discussion this year about how that should be coded and where it should be coded to. Then we had some things to change. Rebel Kids Care just comes to mind because it was a big significant change that we didn't have budgeted. So, yeah, I hope that big answers that.
Okay, any other board committees? Do you guys wanna go over yours or any email later?
I'm sorry.
You guys wanna talk about your committee you just went to? Or which?
Yeah, it's up to you or you just met, so if you wanna.
You guys can email and talk about it next time.
I mean, maybe Amy and I are on, what's the individual name? Brown Credit, Credit, who, yeah, it's about the whole, I guess, but um we were just talking about, we only get things that are maybe questionable that Shannon can do differently. So then we go through and decide whether they're, if you're not. So our discussion thing was what fits a program or online file is the way to prove your home and I think it's taken. It was, I would love.
Okay. It's again, to Brittany's point, when I look at them, I go, I'm not sure. Um when we looked at the contract last year, okay, so what if I'm not sure? What do I do as a superintendent? Or I'm not confident or comfortable or whatever, uh there's a committee. And so I appreciate both uh Brittany and Amy for doing that. Uh Mary Ann Martin is the admin on there and then we also have Mary Maher and Todd Bergerson are on that as well. So that's the team or the committee and just you guys have spent, I think, a fair amount of time on it. So on from my desk, I really appreciate the time you guys are putting in. I really do, so.
All right, great. Let's move on to six point four, superintendent report.
Yeah, so just so you know, there's a couple things. I do have a D and an E because I wanna talk about, and letter D will be LTFM. I have some information I wanna give you in chat before you have to pass a resolution. So I want you to look at that. Um and then E is just nothing too major, but an MDE, a safe return to school. Call it a hoop, call it a whatever, we have to do a safe return to school and a survey and whatnot. So I just wanna briefly share on that and Tracy and I, I'll have to meet with her, what is that survey gonna be, what's that gonna look like? Um and so we'll do that as well. So uh first thing I have in there is the MSDA negotiations. Uh there's some emails back and forth with Evan Mates, who is their representative. We are still working on a, trying to find a schedule and a start and a meeting date. Um we have a personnel committee meeting after this board meeting, so I'm hoping that we can get some dates and like we did before, we set up some Mondays. I wanna share that back with him tomorrow, whatever we come up with, and so then we can start to get him scheduled. He has not reached out, well, I shouldn't say that. We've had an email train kind of going back and forth in regards to that. So that's where we are there. Uh transportation update, you know that we've been meeting with contractors, uh Pender Transportation was here at the last board meeting and shared there. Um we, Eileen and I did meet with them again last Wednesday, I believe it was, Wednesday or Thursday, uh talked more about what was presented at the last board meeting and uh did have the discussion as to that's all, as the superintendent, that's what I wanna recommend to you guys that we're gonna do. Uh one thing in that um report, I guess, or that that we shared last uh board meeting was that um Setters had a shuttle out in morning and afternoon that was showing up on that paper with eleven thousand some odd dollars. That shuttle is gonna be needed right away because we're not sure if we're gonna need it, so we've already penciled in to start the year with it. Eileen and Keith are both confident that we're gonna need it. So then that took their percentage back to around the thirty percent, which made me feel better because otherwise they had a lot of, their percentage of loss was higher. Now with that back in, it's not as bad. Um so that's also a resolution here tonight. I told them, we talked to them uh about that. Um there is some concerns still out there and I get it, but at the end of the day, we also have to make a decision and move on so Eileen can get things organized and set up. So it was an overall, and I shared this with the weekly update, it was a good meeting, it was good dialogue, it was good conversation. So anyway, I wanna make sure you do that. The second thing, and I have some stuff here to hand out, um this is, we met with uh MetroCog, make sure I said it right. Um so what do we got here? One, two, three, four, one, one, one. I'm so appreciate it on this side right here. And I think there's one peachy there. So there's a map that you're getting there and then the second sheet is going to, it's easier, it's on the back of your picture too, but to flip it over, you're gonna get a headache. So I printed the back on here again so you can look at them both at the same time. Um we met with MetroCog, they're the ones that we've uh are chatting with about our safe outs to school, we expanded our walk zones, we've affected our bus ropes, our lack of busing, or less busing. So they are working with us uh in Glendon and in Dilworth, uh what that might look like. The other thing that we've been meeting, we met with Clay County Sheriff, we've met with uh and their department with our new SRO that will have Val here at the high school, middle school, as well as Justin Vogel, the Glendon uh police chief. Were worried and concerned about what do we do here when school starts? How do we drop off kids? Where's the safe space? Where are the buses go? So when we met with MetroCog in Dilworth, we brought this up, like, hey, could you guys come and look what we're thinking with Clay County Sheriff's Department and Justin Vogel and just our transportation and our admin team? Does this seem safe? Does this seem like a good plan? What do you guys think? So they came out, I wanna say Wednesday morning, and we walked this whole area, showed them what we were planning. They liked their idea. This is their report back to us, basically putting on paper what we said we wanted to do, which was really nice for of them to do for us as they're going through this whole plan. So I I wanna get this out um to our families so they know this is gonna go, because sooner communication is key. You can see that at the north end of this building of the Glendon site, it's gonna be two-way traffic just into that north parking lot. So parents that were here last year as elementary kids or whether they have drop off and pickup, they can still do that. The one thing that's vitally important, uh I guess was for me and not just me, it was a bunch of us, is that we have one entry, one entry point in this building. If you've seen any school shootings, any, it's because people can get in everywhere and we're gonna lock the place down. So the issue with the drop off on the north end is their kids are gonna have to walk a little bit to the middle of the building. It's just what it is, okay? Um but it also gets them out of the way so it's safe for our buses to come in and drop. So if you look at that map, that yellow section, I printed it in color so you could see it easier, that is just gonna be one lane right down the middle. It's gonna have cones on either side, so only the bus could drive down the middle of that and it's a one-way for the buses. It's gonna be painted yellow, it's the bus loading zone. And if you notice the arrows, it's heading south. And there's a reason why it's heading south. It's the train tracks, we can't get out of here at the end of the day, we can't get out of here in the morning. It's just a bottleneck, uh the Clay County Sheriff's Department said it, Justin Vogel said it, Metro Cog said, you can't go out that way. So it's gonna head south, so it's the opposite direction as what was drawn, um which, so some people are gonna get worried because we met with the bus contractors too. They're gonna let kids out on the right side. Kids are gonna have to walk in front of the bus to go into the school. But all the buses are gonna sit there, they're gonna wait there, they're not gonna move there and they're the only people that are gonna be in this whole area because it's all painted yellow and they're right in the middle of it. Kids are gonna go out, middle school, high school in the morning, now the elementary kids are gonna come up and load into their shuttle bus. All buses are gonna leave at the same time. So it's not like, oh, I'm full, I'm taking out. Nope. You're all leaving at the same time. Are we ready? Are we clear? Do we have everybody? Nobody's walking anywhere? Yep, we're clear. They all go. They'll have south, they'll get here, that gives them time to turn around and get lined up on Park Avenue if there is a train. But they can all go together. So safer, smoother, better. You notice the south end, right where we are tonight, that is also gonna have two-way traffic, so you can zoom in here. Here's why that's very important. After activities and the football game, they can go north or they can go south, they can get out of here quicker. High school kids after school can go up the north end or they can go up the south end. Divides them up, gets them out of the way. And these were vital pieces for both law enforcement groups. Don't have them bottleneck, they'll be ramming into each other, they're gonna rear end each other. Let's give them two ways to get out. So in the morning, same thing. They could come in on the north end and they can access that parking lot from the north end. They can also ask to access it from the south end and it won't bottleneck the traffic on Park Avenue. So.
So we're gonna have signs over there that says bus loading zone? Do you have that already?
Not yet, so we.
There's some bus sign over there.
Well, you do, but every sign, we've already walked that too. And we're gonna take all these signs and we're, some have to be just flipped around. Um we have some stop signs that we don't need, but we need somewhere else. I think there was like two signs we needed. Otherwise our signage, we're just gonna shift it, move it. It's gonna be on stands. So so like this bus loading one that you were just looking at, it's gonna be flipped around, it's gonna be on a stand with sandbags because it's gonna be in the street. So the bus loading zone, so there's no other way to drive through other than a bus coming at you, so that's gonna block that traffic, basically, except for the bus down the middle. So uh Ryan and Brian and Justin Vogel, we walked it, we looked at all of our signage, we made a map, they are already getting it over. So, yep.
So you, we need activities, that's enough, nothing going down the middle of that street. Anytime?
Correct.
You're not talking about the school, all the small things that time you could run that.
Yeah, so that, so we we did have some discussion on that too. Right now, they can act, they can leave the north end and they can leave the south end. And if you go down the middle, there is no way out there anyway because like we do some right now, that's the sidewalk and that's just for pedestrians, like right where the main entrance is. Because in the summer, they haven't finished it, so we drive, I've been using it too. But that's gonna have a pedestrian sign right in the middle, that's one we're gonna order so they can't drive through there. So when you're here in events, you can't get out through there anyway, you have to come down to this end. Well, if you're right here, you're gonna go right out here. If you go to the north end, you'll go right up to the north end. So that whole area should be shut down.
But there'll be a crosswalk coming across right into the new entrance, right? Pass the bus loading area?
Yes, yeah.
It'll come through the different parts.
To walk, you can.
To walk.
Yes, the walking areas are all gonna be there, yes. Yep, yep. So just wanted you guys to look at that, uh see it. Uh again, MetroCog, this is, they agreed with us and then they put it on a nice map for us to share. Uh Clay County Sheriff's Department's on board with this drawing, hopefully you guys are too.
But we're not doing G, where they have Gs here, we're not gonna open those doors. They have to come up to the secure entrance, right?
They do.
Yeah.
Yep, they do. So it's a little, the Gs, what does G say?
It just said, recommend ideally one or more of these doors that allow the students to enter.
No, yeah, they said that, we said, no, I don't want, because here's the problem with those Gs, if they go in those, we instantly have kids all over the building. And not only that, who else? We don't know, we just won't know. The only time, I guess it's F, I think, you guys, correct me if I'm uh, fair pickup. Okay, after school, you'll notice, we are saying kids can leave the building out those. So if parents want to line up on Park Avenue, at the end of the day, if they wanna go right up to the parents, they could do that. Um the other thing is sports teams. So let's say we play Holly, Holly's coming into town with their bus, they are gonna park right on Park Avenue, there's a little swing out for them, for their bus, and they're gonna come right into that new entrance that is not quite done, they're working on it down here. That's gonna be for all teams we play, so their buses will always be parked out front and they won't have to figure out and mess up parking back there.
Drive, yeah, drive around them. That's a good idea.
Right, so that's our plan there, um is that they'll drop out there and their bus can always stay there and there's not people all around them running into them. Nice for their bus driver too when they leave, it's like, nope, nobody's around you, just get out and go, so.
So that's what leaves the mind, is that south door open for people to come into the new gym?
No, they have to enter here.
Right here.
He's just talking about teams with access, they would come in.
One time he said, everything was coming into the theater and everything to that new south entrance.
Right here.
Oh, right over here, this one?
This is the new south entrance.
Was there another one right here?
Yeah.
This is the one, yep.
And at one time, for some reason.
On the other side of the theater where they have, okay. Okay, that's all right.
I thought we were having some buses circle through there to drop off some kids with one reading or another, or one by the top.
I think that was several plans ago, I think it changed.
Well, I just think for us, when those other teams come, they come in and park, they just stop, they're done, they come in and they're out of the way. So then they're not driving through a busy parking lot, so.
I was saying that something they do with early drop off of kids who've done a little earlier, they're gonna stack and have the knowledge.
Or like our own kids, you mean?
Yeah. I know, are we doing that like some handicaps?
Oh yeah, we have to, yep. Yeah, there will be handicap spots here because we have to, we're fully, so all the codes will be there.
I'm almost super excited.
I'm sure that Lindsay will come up with a.
What would you like, Park Christian, when you can get something, you get a parking spot right here?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well, yeah.
Well, it's not a bad idea.
Anyway, I do want you guys to look at it, so if we have any questions, uh concerns that'd like you to tell me kind of this week, because this is something we do wanna get out to our families so they know and leave time to go, so, okay? That's that.
Yeah.
What's that?
Nicole approved of it.
Oh, sweet.
There we go.
I want, I want to just.
Oh, did you? Okay, yeah. Justin was, I I just can't, I'll say this publicly, he was a major player in this. He was vital to the discussion, he shared a lot of insight. I really appreciated his inputs and the Clay County Sheriff's Department too, it was good. Obviously, uh MetroCog, you know, they they do it for a living, so that was kind of really handy to have them as well. So, yeah, that was good. Um, construction update, we walked the building here today, I think that shared a lot. Um and we have some meetings with Tom Stock uh this week and so um we'll talk about that at another time, but uh everything is going, Travis today, as you guys walked this building with me, uh other than the media center might be right at the end, otherwise he feels the areas and spaces are, uh we're gonna be okay. Dilworth, we know that the office area is gonna be end of September. The gym's over there, we are gonna get one, we're having more discussions with them, but one and we're hopefully both of them uh by the start of the school year. The rest of the rooms and over there, Dennis is confident that they will be ready. I said, okay, so.
Or settled in the old year, what was it?
That's gotta get torn out too. So they're coming next week or the week after, it's either this coming Saturday or the Saturday after, they're gonna rip out that floor and the issue that we had with the new floor. And then they wanna start putting the other one back in and we're, that's what we're working on coordination because they won't be able to put in the new gym floor yet because we have to take out some windows in the gym. Long story, but we, but I'm hopeful that they can just do the existing middle school gym right away then on the eighth and that's what they're gonna talk about, so that one will be done. Yep.
Maybe it's something um we should try to do a tour.
We do, I think next time, or sooner if you want. We do. I think next time, or sooner if you want.
I'm just looking, next Monday is already the first. Like maybe next Monday night?
We can.
Just let's just know about it and then we can talk about it at the end. But if we're gonna have our board meeting here, I don't wanna like.
We can do, yeah, whatever you guys wanna do.
Just think about it. I was just looking at the calendar going, huh, it'd just be kinda good to see the update there. So. All right, LTMFM, here we go.
Yes, so Lindsay just passed. You guys get yours. Uh, this is the LTFM. This is the tenure plan. Uh, I made almost no adjustments to this. Because last year, it was figuring out all the bonding and all the paying and all that and what we have moving forward. Um, this report. So we're gonna approve this report tomorrow. We can change it. It's just what it is. So it's to show that we do have a plan and that we're moving forward. A lot of this, as even LTFM, Sarah Miller from the state will tell you, it's significantly made up of projections, right? Um, roofing is coming, what the main part of this is, is when you have a building project coming up, when you have some big bonding thing or, uh, some major projects over a hundred thousand. Let's say we were gonna, we didn't have a building project and we're gonna slowly replace roofs. This could lay out that plan for the next 10 years. Okay, we're doing this one. We're doing this one. I have Trimco's report for our roofs. We have some things coming forward. It will get added to this, but I haven't had a chance to go through it that closely yet. But so I'll just kinda take you through, this is, if you look at the first sheet, and I don't know if they're numbered, I'm sorry, the top sheet, you'll look down at line 12, debt services for existing, uh, facilities and H and R. You'll look over to the right in 2023, it says a little over a million dollars. F24 is a million. And then at 26, that number just goes away, that 946 and that's gone. This is funding that is from, uh, the 2010 HVAC system. And then it also has money from this bonding that you did on this project. That, this bonding project doesn't stop there because that's a, goes on longer. And that's the 200,000, so down below, see the 220, 219? That's this new one that's gonna continue on. Um, it's got all these pockets are getting thrown into here. And then this is the payoff. This is not the payoff. This is the incomes we're getting from those bonds to pay for these projects. Okay? Um, they put it all under LTFM, long-term facilities maintenance funding now, uh, which includes the health and safety dollars that we get funded from the state. It's, anyway, I'll just leave it at that. Um.
How long does that, uh, line 16 may? How many years after can we, we can do a long term?
Um, that goes to 2040, if I remember, because you passed it and it paid 20, paid 19, paid 20. I believe it goes to 2040. Does it?
I was right, because I think it was. I think it was.
It was, because remember when I got here, I was all shook up about paying it. We do have some relief coming, um, in our expenditures.
Something is dropping off.
Yeah, it drops off. So that's the 20 can pay off.
Yeah.
That's gonna drop off. So, okay, in, in all of these sheets, there's also an expenditures. And in there, so we're getting 671,000, 675,000, okay? You can see that up there on line 10, initial revenue on that first page again. And then you can see what we're getting every year. That's our LTFM dollars. With our bonding, we're spending over 500 and some on the payment, on the $9 million bond. So which if you, okay, I'm gonna find the sheet here. Sorry. It's the expenditures. So if you look at the top, it'll say allowable expenditures. So on the bottom of.
This one that has the M, page four, the fourth one in.
If you keep them in order, yes, the fourth one. At the bottom there, so it says the total annual tenure plan expenditures. You see that? Hundred eighty, hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine thirty. Okay, the number right above it says a hundred and fifty-four. Okay, that's what we've actually spent in 2022. So that's actual. So if you go all the way up, that was this last year. Okay? You, you notice in mechanical systems, we spent a lot of money and that's where our custodial budget was a little high too. Some of that's with this project. Some of it was not a part of the project that we had to fix and update and go through some of that. So that's why that number is a little out of luck. If you look, out of our 670 some thousand dollars, in 2023, we are going to get, have left over after we make our payment, 137,425. You see that number down at the bottom? We are budgeting that we're gonna spend 110,000. Notice those numbers about 5,000, 10,000, 25,000. This is our projection, because we're only gonna have 137. We thought we'll keep a little 20 or what is it, 17? I could read. Twenty-seven thousand and a little bit of a savings there.
Yeah. Well, the thought is, is because we're remodeling now, everything's gonna be new. We shouldn't have that much stuff hopefully to.
Yeah, so we are. It's gonna be our roofs.
Oh, okay.
I have, I have something to share with you after I met with Aylers, uh, last Thursday. It's, they help schools with financing. I talked to them again today. There's going to be some other dollars available to us.
Oh.
And I'm gonna share with that after the board meeting and it will be in a resolution in September. So the public will learn more about it. I'm just getting more. Yep, it's a law change interpretation by bonding lawyers. It was brought to my attention last week and so no new taxes for anybody, but there's some other authority that they've already, that's passed that we have access to. And I'm gonna share the details after, because we have to go through some hoops to get the money. I'll explain that later. That's gonna bridge our gap in our roofing. Minnesota School Finance, that is finance. What I guess I'm telling you with this, this is a good plan. We're gonna have, it's gonna be okay. And, uh, this too shall pass. Um.
I wanna talk about getting our research.
As do I. It's so.
It's like the bone in my side.
Yep.
Like someone pull it out.
Yeah. Um, so we're gonna stay within budget and make our bond payments. How's that?
That's wonderful. But Lindsay would be happy to hear that.
Yep. And the shortfalls that are out there with this building, our buildings, our number one issue is roofs. And I got some good news. The last, uh, end of last weekend, today, how we can access a little over a million dollars. That's gonna go a long way in our temporal roofing report that I have to go through with you guys in the next months. There you go.
There is.
This, this is again, something we have to have at the board. We have to have a resolution. It's in here tonight. Um, if you have any questions, you can, Marcus and I can take you into the weeds a little bit. But everything after this year is all a projection anyway, because we're trying to figure out what's gonna happen to our building. What do we need to do? And then you can modify it. It just shows that there is a plan.
Yeah.
Okay, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ten years ago, it was on our roof, were in pretty good shape. That's ten years ago.
Yeah.
Right. Yep. Yep. We have a couple of spots in this, on this building that need to be done ASAP. They do it because we have water leaking all over. Uh, and so it's all right. We got it. There's a plan. Sweet. LTFM, and last one I have on here is the M D E safety return to school. Um, as part of the S R three funding, uh, we have to continue doing these plans. So I'm gonna meet with Tracy. Uh, she was out last week. We couldn't connect. Uh, I wanna meet with her early this week so we can get that message out to parents. So we can talk about that at the board level too, if there's anything that we need to adjust or adapt based on the feedback we get from our parents. Um, it's kind of a hoop now, I hope, that we're jumping through. That should be easier than it has been in the past. Let's hope it continues that way. Um, so more to come on that as we discuss what it's gonna be. And I'll share it with you guys too on a weekly update. Hey, now with Tracy, here's what we're thinking on the survey. Okay? It's just some kind of checkboxes for the state in order to move on and access your S R three funds. So.
Okay.
That's it. Questions?
All right, hearing of questions, let's move on to seven point one. Approval of the regular, uh, July 11th meeting. We have a motion. I got David first. Nicole, you want a second? Nicole's second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right, consent agenda. Laura, claims and accounts. Will you just kindly say that one more time? Wonderful.
Should we repeat it for the public?
Yeah, uh, 1,730,000, 111 and 15 cents.
It's just so equity.
It's very.
Nothing on you, Laura. It's just, this microphone right here.
In a, in your, uh, the, the file, the audit for treasurer, treasurer's monthly board report. Retirement of, um, Jeannie Maltzner, food service effective August 31st, 2022. Uh, approve the resignation of Lori Moore Castle, health aide effective July 18th, 2022. Prove the resignation of Katie Frisco, elementary teacher, effective the end of the 21, 22 school year. Approve the resignation of Carrie Henry, high school teacher, effective the end of the 21, 22 school year. Do we have a motion? Motion by Amy. Is there a second? Second by David. Any questions or discussion?
I, for two counties, sir. They wanted one of the bills. What did we use to the church to report?
Interpreter bill.
For the Morehead bills, that we had interpreter for the bill. Yep. So that happened actually with some summer school. Uh, we had to have an interpreter come in because one of our, uh, students that qualified for that service needed to have some over the summer.
Did one person decide to, because it wasn't very normal.
Yeah, that was a small one, but you also had the other interpreters, the Morehead Public Schools, because we contract with them. Same. Yeah, that's the initials of the person. That needed the services that we, or no, I'm sorry, that was the actual person providing the service from the Morehead School. And. Yep, because of the amount of time and hours they were, we were using them. So same thing, it, uh, is required. We needed interpreters. We, we, we contract with them for that service because we don't have that service. Yep, I asked that specific question also. I said, what's up with the initials? Well, that's the person, that's the person doing that, performing the, the service. And it's required. It's, it's in their I D Ps. And so we have to provide that service. Yep. Yep, great question. So, um, Katie, we've known here for a little while. That's been posted for a while. Uh, that's been kinda quiet. Uh, I have a couple of other ideas rolling around in my head that I've listened with Wayne the Part about. But I think, and so.
What grade is she? Third?
Third grade. Uh, she had an opportunity to advance, kind of advanced position, uh, at a neighboring school. Good for her. Great opportunity for her. I think we have one applicant right now. We have two. Okay, we have two. I know Wayne was gonna reach out when we interviewed earlier in the year, uh, to see if any of those second and third, he said, we had a couple of good ones. He was gonna reach out to them to see if they were still available. Um, so not a ton right now. The other one, we just got over the weekend. So the last one there, uh, Carrie Henry, we just got that. So we are just, we're just gonna be posting it. Social studies. Yep. So opportunity for anybody out there.
Probably better than, well, part of the military, because we're trying to find an app for them.
Sure.
Some way you're gonna do good people, they have a health, but that's a push for teachers.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other one, we got one and I don't know what happened to that. I assume the other thing they have for them.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, um, it's an issue. So interesting you bring it up. Uh, Commissioner Mueller is gonna address that state of Minnesota about all the teacher shortages and principal shortages and superintendent chores over, 67 schools have a different superintendent starting next year. Sixty-seven. And like 28 of them have no superintendent experience. But then it just, it's the same order. So you can pick principals, you can pick teachers, you can pick. It's just a significant shortage, as we all know. We're short arrows right now too. We're short in the kitchen right now. We are working on that, as I shared with you guys on my weekly update, that what Rhonda is working with. And we're gonna try to meet with them this week or next week to get some other help. Hopefully. Okay, we aren't right now. So I'm glad you got that up, Brittany. I have, um, um, Kayla, shared with me the numbers from middle school, high school, from elementary and all the visits. She feels confident and comfortable that we're gonna start the way we're starting. And I have those numbers. They might be in my old office. They might. Anyway, I have a, I have a sheet and Katie can share it, but she shared on an email too. Maybe I can get that back from her. Um, because I wanted to show you guys that, because it's one of the things that we talked about before. Hey, if we're gonna replace this position nut. So I asked her to do that for me. She did. I have the numbers. And the numbers really, yeah, numbers can change. I know that. But the numbers, uh, as she shared with me, we should be okay. Especially with the two high school and middle school offices right next door. So if somebody needed to go help, Sarah right there, Sarah's got plenty of work with Tracy and I mean, and Katie, but she's right there too. So if we got into a stink, we have some people close by. So I'm fairly confident that we shouldn't have to. So, no, I'm glad you asked. What's that? Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion by Amy and a second by David. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Um, nine point one, we are tabling. We're gonna move to nine point two, coaches' activity handbook. Um, this is to approve the first reading of the 2022, 23 coaches' activity handbook. Do we have a motion? Motion by Nicole. Is there a second? Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Nine point three, this is a non-certified contract for Anita Patton, peer professional, effective the start of the 2022, 23 school year. Do we have a motion? Motion by Laura. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Nine point four, non-certified contract for Lauren Summers. Uh, peer professional, start of the 22, 23 school year. Do we have a motion? Motion by David. Is there a second? Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Nine point five, this is, uh, for the 2022, 23, uh, fee schedule. This is the second reading. It's in your packet. Um, do we have a motion? Motion by David. Is there a second? Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion? All right, all of them in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Nine point six, this is, um, to approve the elimination of Bus Route 10 and Bus Route 14. Do we have a motion? Motion by Nicole. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Any further questions or discussion?
Yeah, I mean, it is what it is. And we've made those adjustments in percentage wise. So, you know, when you start slicing and trying to give a route back and all that, this ended up, I guess, making the most sense for the group. And, uh, yeah, I, I mean, I, the meeting was, the meeting was a good conversation. It was good talks. So, and they understood that we had to do something. So. Yeah.
All right. Uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Nine point seven, this is the long-term facilities maintenance resolution. Um, we'll get a motion in a second and then we'll have Amy read the resolution. We have a, uh, two motion. Motion by Ronnie. Is there a second? Second, was that Nicole or Brittany? Nicole? All right, Amy, do you have the resolution there? Okay, thank you.
The resolution, individual long-term facility maintenance tenure plan. Whereas regularly scheduled meeting of the school board of independent school district 2164 was held at the D G F community group, Linden, at 6 o'clock P M, July 25th, 24th. Whereas pursuant to Minnesota statute section 123 B.595, all public schools are required to annually update the district long-term facilities maintenance tenure plan. Whereas pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 123B.595, all public schools are required to annually update the district long-term facilities maintenance tenure plan and submit the board approved plans to Minnesota Department of Education. Viewed resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 2164, the words blended now as follows. The board hereby approves revised district's long-term facility maintenance tenure plan. The clerk is authorized and directed to submit property to the adopted resolution to the Minnesota Department of Education as soon as previously practicable after construction. But in no event later than July 31st, 2022. The motion for the adoption of the resolution was moved by Ronnie Tang and seconded by member Nicole Green.
All right. Um, so this is a roll call vote. So signify yes or no, please, for I or me. Brittany? Cole?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Myself, I, Amy?
I.
David?
I.
And Laura. All right. Resolution passes. All right. Um, next board meeting is Monday, August 8th. We'll be in the DGF Community Room again. Followed by the Facilities and Transportation Committee meeting on August 8th. Um, and then I just want to point out, we are, uh, on August 11th, just to the public most, we are going to be having a, um, work session. As, as a school board, we're starting at noon or 12:30. I think we're still working on, we're going to have lunch or what we're going to do. We'll have further communication going on. And then we're going to follow with team building, uh, supper and, uh, with the admin team. So. That's going to be happening August 11th. Is anybody interested in like next Monday night doing a tour in, or in Delaware?
Thank you for saying that. I didn't say this in my report. I have the MDE, MASA Back to School Conference on Monday, next Monday.
Oh.
So here's the deal. We could still have it. I will be leaving the cities at 3 o'clock. I'm sure there'll be no traffic issues. And so that puts me here by at least midnight. No, it's good. So yeah, next Monday, yeah, unless you want to do it without me. Dennis will be there.
We like you and your work. So is, is anybody opposed to like Wednesday, the third?
Or even later this week or yeah.
I just think like some of the summer recs are still wrapping up this week.
Sure.
How about when, you're not going to be coming any week yet. So don't. Okay. So should we try for the third? Yeah. How, what, what time works? 5:15, 5:30?
Five.
Five? August 3rd, Wednesday, August 3rd.
August 8th.
You good? You good? 5:15, we can do 5:15. Five, can you be there at five? David, what works for you? You can make five work? Okay. 5 o'clock.
5 p.m. Wednesday.
Yep.
August.
August 3rd. Um, Brooke, can you send us out a meeting invite?
Let's make sure we have Dennis on that.
Yeah, Dennis too. Okay. Also for the public watching, if anybody is still watching this, there's lots of great employment opportunities at our school district. We would love for you to come and work for us. Um, we have a lot of exciting stuff happening. So please reach out to the district office. They would be happy to assist you in application processes. So thank you all. All right. It is 7:15. Meeting adjourned. Yeah, I'm here. I'm standing. Do you want to turn that?